Okay, court has returned to regular session at six forty-five after an executive session dealing with some personnel matters along with our attorney, Mrs. Tinder. Okay.
Okay, item B, in agreement with Southwestern Community Action Council for the use of the LCHS Auto Tech program facility to provide preventive maintenance service on vehicles according to the terms of the agreement. Item C, five additional appointment days for the following band and music teachers to conduct the Emerald Mini Band Camp, June the twenty-seventh, June the thirtieth, July the first, second, and third, two thousand fourteen, to be paid at an established daily rate, and I would like for you to add Mr. Harry Carter to the list. Item D, a memorandum of understanding with Valley Health Systems to provide comprehensive healthcare services for students in the school-based health center at MARS Pre-K-8 effective June first, two thousand fourteen, according to the terms of the agreement. Item E is to reapply to the West Virginia Department of Education Child Nutrition Division for participation in the community eligibility option for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year. And item F, out-of-state travel for the following employees, Jerry Pramines to Dearborn, Michigan, which was June eighth through the eleventh, already required to attend the Ford AAA National Competition that was paid for out-of-town funds, and for Jerry Ice to Seattle, Washington, July thirteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, to attend the IPI Differentiating Instruction Conference events paid for through the school funds. Now, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer, and if you have any on item A, it's a good opportunity here to answer any questions.
Auntie Wilma, she came up to the podium, we hate that you come here not getting to talk. That would break your heart. Are we pretty much doing the same, proposing, did the same thing we did this year as far as the program?
It is the same thing. We had just a little bit higher of direct certified students, which means we would pick at a higher reimbursement rate if we reapply, and it would lock us in for four more years at the higher rate. It's not that much trouble to reapply, so, you know, I don't, I wouldn't see any reason why we shouldn't get all the money that we can.
So this is still a universal program for all students?
It's the same program.
Same program, but we might be able to get more reimbursement?
Correct.
Did you say it would lock us in for four years?
Four more years. We can opt out at any time that we want, but we would be locked in for the higher rate for four years. The one difference, starting this year, would be that we must, each school must, offer one of the three options, correct, whether you have the after first period breakfast? It's mandatory this year, it's not optional, they have to...
Can I explain that again now?
They have, this year, it's in the law, actually, that we have, every school has to have one of the three breakfast initiatives in place, which would be breakfast in the classroom, breakfast after first, or grab and go breakfast. So, they do, they do not want the children to get off the bus, go to cafeteria, eat breakfast, and then go to class, they want them to have it later in the day after they've... The idea is that they get hungry a little later in the day, that they eat better and that they learn better. So this is, this is, and it's not an option this year, it's mandatory that we do that. But our schools, most of them were already operating with one of those strategies anyway. I think, if you all recall, talking about, let's take MRS Pre-K-8 as an example, there were wagons and they would sit the breakfast table and take them to the classrooms. They had various offerings, didn't they, in the classroom, in the cafeteria, after first order? So it's not a change for us, basically.
And it's still free lunch, and they're free.
Everything's free. Brittany?
Well, it's certainly a good program. I think that's one of the things you read about, is we're kind of maybe ahead of the grid a little bit here, in our state, in our county in particular. I'm glad we're going to do it if we get more reimbursement, if we can. I still have to think about this, when you've got to eat sushi, get dairy, wait an hour or two. It depends on who you are, I think. That's what I'm thinking. If I'm ready to eat your arm, I'll think I'd do it. Okay. Share with us about how wonderful everything is. What about just, this is kind of off-topic a little bit, you know, we, this usually local produce and things like that, are we doing any kind of thing like that?
We would like to. We did the honey lunch, dear.
Who did we purchase them from?
Wade Stilt, no, it was in Wayne County, actually. And I would be open, you know, if anybody wants some produce.
Who would have to do it, like farmer, who would have to, like, contact with?
The farmer.
Farmers, something like that, or something? You get asparagus, can't you help?
I would like to. I would like to get that asparagus.
What's keeping us from it?
Well, Becky, Becky Ferguson sells himself asparagus, so...
Conflict.
It's a conflict, I guess.
Oh, well, God. Do we have that ruling from the Ethics Commission, that that would be...
We did.
That would be worth, that would be worth asking, you know, to check in to see if...
But she would not be able to say? No, I can't imagine that would be... If there was a connection, there was one of the board members, you know, I could see it.
He was by here, he was by here last week or so.
I think we need to just send that question, just for clarification, because that's right here in our community, and we need to be able to utilize that. And I think I asked once before, because, just like eggs, if there was someone, they, do they have to go through a process as far as from their farm to some kind of inspection or something before we purchase it from them, or how does that work?
They really haven't had anything in place, and when I ask them, they, they will say, "Well, it's up to you to go up to the farm and say this is safe." I'm a little bit scared of that. I don't know a whole lot about that.
If I was a farmer, I'd be a little scared of that.
Yeah, a little scared of that.
If you get yourself sick or something.
Yeah, it is.
You have this E Co-op, that brings kind of produce, maybe something like...
That would be my question, who does the inspection before we put it for the kids?
Do you take it to a health partner, somebody involved, or some agency?
Well, that's what I was wondering. No, if they're insured, then, you know, I think that, that would be, that's what...
I was at a meeting about this one time, and that cultural commissioner suggested that they go through a Co-op, we need a Co-op there in Lincoln County, and the Co-op would have insurance.
But the, but the, Mr. Ferguson sells to restaurants.
Correct. He sells to programs, so I would think that...
He may only be cutting...
He has all the paperwork in him, okay.
I heard that he sells to the pre-brian.
He's not used to it.
Thank you, Angela. Anything else, anything else on any of these administrative items? Thank you, Mr. Baker. You okay?
Not bad, not bad, not bad.
All right, good, good. Okay, if anyone has anything further, call for question, all in favor of the administrative items, that long yet?
So is item A settled? The way it's listed, it doesn't...
No, we just had a discussion.
Just discussion, so no decision?
No decision at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the finance section, in motion?
Standing.
And I guess it's, Mr. Biggitt?
Item A, scheduled invoices totaling six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and nine cents. Invoices available for public inspection in the office. Item B is the summer two thousand fourteen, fifteen payroll schedule.
And you draw about payroll schedules, is that pretty much about the hours of the year?
It is just for the summer, just the summer month.
Anybody have anything on the, any of those finance issues with the summer pay schedule? Kevin Law asked a question on that, on the finance items there. All in favor of the finance items, either by a yes please? Oh, yes, yes. You don't have to speak up down there.
Yes.
Okay, that's better. I know you're eating, I don't care what you say.
I'm not eating.
You don't have to scry me, whatever you call them, yeah, that way you watch.
Classic, I can't approve. I'm not eating.
Okay, all right, the personnel's good, and I have a motion, would you like the personnel? Motion?
I have a motion.
For the section.
All right. Section A is the employment of a substitute, excuse me, for short or a long-term professional physician. B, employment of professional personnel. Section C is the transfer of professional personnel for the school year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Section D is employment of substitute service personnel, and that should say school year two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Section E, transfer of service personnel for school year two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Section F, employment of extracurricular athletic personnel. And section G, employment of extracurricular personnel for the summer of two thousand fourteen. If you go down to G eleven, that date is incorrect, that should say June sixteenth through June Section H, leave of absence noted at effective date. Section I, resignation and/or retirement, and it's under the effective date of resignation. We send the transfer of professional personnel, Michelle Smith, MRS Pre-K-8 teacher, grade one, for West Virginia Code eighteen dash seven dash seven eight, okay, five. We send the transfer of professional personnel, Rebecca Presser, MRS Pre-K-8 teacher, Miss Pearl, West Virginia Code eighteen dash seven dash seven eight, okay, five. Reassignment of Midway Elementary, grade three teacher Melissa Anderson to teacher grade five. Any questions?
I could pretty, on these summer runs, too, I noticed on the, on the bid sheet that someone said three and a half hours, and someone said four. If they, if it's a four-hour run, do they get paid regularly?
If it is a, depending on the... Anything that goes over three and a half hours is a full day for service personnel.
What then, I want to follow up the bridge question.
Why would it be four hours? Well, like, we were asking that. I was going to say different positions.
Some of them are posted as fifteen dollars an hour.
So they're hourly and not a salary?
Yes. Depending on the type of run, if it is a run where students receive credit, and I know this is confusing, that's not law, just like the teachers get a full day salary versus hourly. If it is a credit, students are receiving credit for credit for something that's considered a separate type of a job, it's not an hourly position, such as credit recovery. Students are coming to get credits, and they are there all day. They receive a credit for a class. Some of these are camps, like Energy Express or something like that, those are not credit bearing programs. Extended school year, by law, is a required offering for students with disabilities. That is considered a regular program. Dear first run...
So any, these don't, others, in accordance with that, anybody that's working more than three and a half hours, is paid by the hour?
If, if it is an hour, if it's one of those extracurricular, that is fifteen dollars an hour, they're paid by the hour, if it's four hours, it's four hours.
Most of them I saw didn't have the rate on them. They just said hourly, driver's hourly rate.
Yeah, that would just be their regular rate a day.
But they're getting paid eight hours a day.
Yeah, because it's a credit, it would be a credit class that they are...
My next question is, if they, some of the groundskeepers, they drive to work and then they go work six on the ground crew, they're still, are they getting the overtime?
You know.
Well, the way I understand the law is that you have to work eight hours before. You don't just get paid eight hours.
That if, if...
But I'm just wondering if they're paying overtime for these.
They have to actually work forty hours, then?
Yeah, it's in the reset magic number, forty hours, and of course, they wait before they ever kick into overtime.
Right, yeah, but if you're getting eight hours a day, that's what I'm questioning is, are they getting four hours going on their overtime, or they're getting eight going on their overtime?
The way it's explained is they're working eight hours, they're getting forty, if they didn't have any other job, they're working a forty-hour work week.
Yeah, but the way the law says, you've got to work forty hours, they're not a working forty hours, they're working twenty.
But that's, they're still being paid for the forty hours.
They're paying them, but they're not working, and the law says you have to work forty. I'm wondering if we're...
We'd have to look into, see what those wage an hour, what that wage an hour.
Because we, I know, we got into this, I went to the wage department, and they said you have to work, like a holiday, you don't, you count it eight hours, but it doesn't count towards overtime, so it's not work.
Right.
That's the worst-case thing here would be, I work, or I get paid for eight hours, then I'm going to go and do another job, get paid time and a half.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we shouldn't be paying time and a half, but they're not working eight hours. They're only, only, only hours...
So they're working on these bus runs?
Yes, actual hours of work.
Yes, on the driving the bus.
So actually, when you make four, really. But even, even for those bus drivers at the school, they've got to be in the actual forty hours, right, actual overtime before they get overtime.
And I do know that we have, have gone to, and had a ruling on that, because the way we're calculating it, is correct, is, you know, we're having...
I personally think we need to take another look at groundskeeper, and come up with some other solution. I think it's being abused. Don't have any doubt about it.
Well, I have a couple. One is, who determines when they need to do this work?
Well, I did ask that question.
Well, I mean, I'm just, you know, is it just, I'm a groundskeeper for handling Pre-K-8, so whenever I take a motion, I go out and cut the grass, or does Dan Smith, I'm assuming, tell me when he wants me to go cut that?
He said he was the one that would, that he determines, because I asked the question, which I think that was posed before, I said, "Do you make this determination, do you have a schedule?" And he said, "He has a schedule, but just like if you have a lot of rain, you know, just for the grass, you have a lot of rain one week, that schedule cannot be followed." You know, so he, you know, looks at, okay, where do I send them? And that's what he said to me. This is what I did, I look at what needs to be done, and have it scheduled, and we will adhere to that schedule if there aren't any emergencies arise, or if we don't have, you know, a lot of rain, or that kind of thing.
That's the logic of it, as long as he's the one deciding not...
Yeah, he said he was going to say, and I, his mouth said, "Or do they come and tell you they want to go do this?" And he said, "No."
Well, I thought he was supposed to create work orders for all the mowers, too, and there're not a work order in there for the grass mowers. I saw one for West Hampton where the principal put them.
And we did, we asked the principals to do that, we mentioned that, and I did ask the principals, and the principals made it...
And there's no time on these work orders, and I thought he told us that the time was going to be on the completed work orders and the cost of everything. Well, I can't pull it up, and I pull up completed work orders, it says cost zero, zero, everything.
But the idea, and I indicated the principals, that they, obviously, I said, "I'm going to do all of this, because I see them, you're there, you're scored." That was that, our last principal's meeting, the four days.
I know, it was first, you have to be told. Do you have any other issues with that?
Well, just think, if you're going to mow a field, you just do it one time in the evening, you don't roll it, and then go back and mow it again.
I thought that, because I think you had mentioned that, or how many times, okay? I wanted to know the, the answer, you know, when I posed the question as to why, and...
I'm talking about the same evening, you mow the ball field, then you start and you mow it again, in the same evening?
Oh, no.
That's just...
That wasn't...
I personally witnessed that going wrong.
Well, I, I think you had mentioned before about, about the mowing, and then coming back maybe the next day or something. So the, the answer to that, when I posed that scenario, was they were trying to get it all taken care of, you know, not, not doing some up here, and then go do another one again, it would be time to do this one again, they were trying to get it all taken care of at one time, and so that it would be on schedule, then they would know. I mean, it made sense to me. If you've got a big field that you get it all mowed, at one time, so you could go back and, and three weeks later, do it again.
One was just not the same spot, I guess.
Well, it was, that was an excuse to me, that was the same...
It's growing overnight now, I've had certain times...
It was the same spot.
I know we want to make the field look good, but there's a point where you have to stop, you know?
Okay. Has that happened again, that they're doing it in the same spot?
Well, yes.
Why don't you call me, but he came up there. Where is he going? Just walk over there, yourself, put your hands under you.
I don't think my eyes were deceiving.
Well, you're...
I may be old, but I still have...
And I can probably, as you're doing, that's what we're doing.
Well, I presume what they were doing, I, I wouldn't think it would be running up at overtime, I don't think they would do something like that. Maybe they were trying to, the grass maybe had been stepped along, and they were trying to get neat, you know, and have to be mowed. They could have been doing that.
It could have been.
Could have been.
The other issue since you brought groundskeeper, is what they're supposed to do, and that we discussed this before, and I know, didn't you tell me, somebody's job description even said to cut grass?
Mowing, yes.
But I know that groundskeepers using that classification are doing other duties that aren't mowing related at all.
Right, and I asked about that, and they felt that with the definition of groundskeeper, that it was within the definition of what groundskeeper.
Well, I would argue with Mr. Smith, by looking at the classifications of groundskeeper and looking at the classifications of maintenance people. When I read those, and I've read them plausibly, but I don't see it that way. And maybe you all need to look and see how you see the definition of those. But I think that's a big stretch to say some of the things are being done, have anything related to grounds. They're maintenance jobs, and that's why I've advocated in the past, if we don't have adequate people to do a job, that we hire a substitute maintenance person, we pay them less than we're paying these people a time and a half, and that's what they do, these jobs that are not groundskeeper jobs, they're maintenance jobs.
But then again, Fred showed us how many maintenance, how many work orders have been produced, and that's kind of ridiculous.
Well, I agree with that, and I'm saying that, I agree here, if there are adequate people over there to do these things, then don't be using a groundskeeper or sub-maintenance, nobody else. If you give the predicament where we've got to do whatever this job is, and all my maintenance people are taking up, then let's make sure it's, the right person is doing the work, because it's cheaper to use a substitute maintenance person than it is pay somebody time and a half, and call them a groundskeeper and try to justify that falls under their classification, because I don't think it does. And I've said this repeatedly, and I'll keep saying it, it's a long time, it's a second. Okay.
Well, I guess maybe sometimes, I'm not even sure, when the groundskeepers are out there, I, you know, they may be out there doing something, I don't know what it is they're doing, I have...
Well, like...
That's where you need a work order. I guarantee you that if you hadn't created work orders, the groundskeeper eats up one the principal's call in. And I don't know how you keep track of what they're doing without work orders, and they just put down six hours or five hours, and what did they do? Nobody knows.
We have a custodian, three, we're mowing at the high school, and we don't have a groundskeeper up there.
No, no, at the high school, there is a groundskeeper, that's what he does.
It's custodian three.
And he was hired, I guess, when the school opened as a groundskeeper, is that not correct? And that's what he does.
Saturday, when I was looking at the soccer, the band field, and just looking around, but he happened to be mowing, and I stopped and talked to him, and he told me, I asked him, I said, "Are you responsible for mowing everything here?" He said, "Yeah, I have to do that." So that's a good job, having to mow it all. So that's what he told me, that he was responsible for it all. Now, coincidentally, I happened to see a grounds person over mowing in another section on, at the very same time, which got my attention as to why the groundskeeper would be out there mowing on the high school, when I just talked to the gentleman who told me that was his job to mow it all. So, that happened Saturday.
Saturday?
Saturday, after Saturday.
Whatever day, I sent you all a picture of the band field, was that Friday, Friday or Saturday?
I think it was Saturday. The grounds, Eric groundskeeper was, no, I mean Eric...
Well, maybe, but whatever, I'd have to, but maybe it wasn't Saturday, whatever day that I, it might have been, or Friday, it was one of the, whenever I went, drove out that way, I was just, I was seeing what progress had been made on the football movement, the band, but it, it probably wasn't Saturday.
Do we have any custodian threes at any of the other schools? There'd have to be a custodian three to mow your lawn, right? There'd have to be a, that classification, right?
Well, from the way I understand, when Mr. Harris was hired, the job was supposed to ask groundskeeper.
Now, he doesn't have the title custodian.
Custodian, he's grounds, no, he is a groundskeeper.
He's listed in the, in our directory as custodian.
When I looked, I think...
That might be a tyba.
Tyba, okay, all right.
Well, that might even fall within that classification, anyway, right now, I don't know.
But now, I can't even address the fact that somebody else was out there mowing somewhere else.
He wasn't Saturday, obviously. I sent you all the picture of the band field on Saturday. I may have seen it on Friday.
The grass was, the grass in the soccer field was short Saturday. I mean, it was, it had just been cut Saturday. I took Zara over for a kick-around Saturday, two o'clock.
I know the field itself had been mowed, but I could tell around it had been mowed recently there at the soccer field. But this, well, I thought it was on Friday. It really was Saturday. I just sent you all a picture of it on Saturday.
What time was Friday? I was out there Friday. But I wasn't hardly around school, I was at school. Oh, I saw you Friday.
That's when I caught you at Burger King.
Yeah. That's right.
It was in the morning.
Oh, okay. Well, I was over there, I had just come from there.
That's where you went to Burger King, but...
I've been at school more than you have. Inside.
Anything else on personnel? That's the case, then, I'll boot for approval of the personnel schedules presented? Oh, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, out. Okay, now we're down to comments and concern.